We'll give it two more minutes.
Mr. Livingston, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You're good this time.
Well, I'm still on the phone. I had to leave the computer alone.
Ms. Only, did we get the actual detailed agenda for this meeting? I just have the backup document.
Yes, sir.
What was the date that was sent, please, and who sent it?
It was sent Friday afternoon.
Did you send it?
Yes, sir.
Let me go back to Friday and pull it up here.
And Ms. Malinowski, I also made a reference on my sheet to the page within the made agendas too, so you'll have it that way, too.
Yeah, the special call meeting that I have here came with the coronavirus ad hoc committee meeting, but it's only an agenda. It's not a detailed piece. There's another one here.
I'll forward it to you.
Will be in it, okay.
Ms. Only, can you send that to me as well? Might as well send it to everybody. I know I need it.
Just hit council, Ms. Only.
I'll send it to all the council members.
Again, good evening, everyone. Let me go ahead and call the specially called meeting of June 28th to order. Let me ask, Ms. Only, do you call roll for council attendance? Once she gets her sentence, everybody.
Malinowski. Dickerson.
Yes.
McBride.
Here.
Livingston.
Here.
Tratio.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Manning. Jackson.
Present.
Myers.
Here.
Newton.
Present.
Thank you.
Thanks, I have on our agenda is adoption of the agenda. Chair and motion of adoption of the agenda.
For move.
It's removed.
Second.
Properly second. Mr. Brown, has any change, deletions, reference to agenda?
No, Mr. Chair, I'm not aware of any deletions from the agenda or any additional add-ons, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. That brings us to our next item. Item three on your list, agenda is Development Services Committee. Ms. Tratio.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I apologize for the interruption.
Yeah, Ms. Myers.
You had no motion to adopt the agenda, but you guys didn't vote to do so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Ms. Only, can you call the roll for the adoption of the agenda?
Malinowski.
Yes.
Dickerson.
Yes.
McBride.
Yeah.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tratio.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Manning. Jackson.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes, ma'am.
Newton.
Yes.
Thanks very much. The agenda is adopted. That brings item three, Development and Services Committee. Ms. Tratio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm actually pulling up my item. I believe we just had the one item that we discussed in executive session. Is that, actually, we did not. We had. Oh, I'm sorry. Could you remind me of what is?
It's the City B G I was on the agenda.
Okay, yes. So that is the one that we discussed in executive session. The committee does not have a recommendation for counsel. I don't know if staff would recommend that this body go into executive session to discuss the matter.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is the county administrator. May I be recognized, sir?
Yes.
Just very briefly, yes, sir. You may want to take this item up at the end so that gives you the opportunity to go into executive session if you choose to. But unless it has a motion that it wants to make without additional information, then we would recommend that this be in executive session related to this contractual matter.
Can you tell me what qualifies this as in the session in terms of the required requirement?
Yes, sir. So it's related to a contract that we have in the matter.
Okay, contracts matter. Okay, that's good. So if there's no objection, then we'll just simply move that after item seven. After item six, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Malinowski, recognize.
Thank you. Just for Ms. Only's sake, I did not receive that agenda. If you did send it out. But I do have the DNS one here, and I would like to make a motion on that item, and that is after hearing our legal input during the committee meeting. I would make a motion to deny this particular request.
There's a motion for denial of this request. Is it second?
I believe, Mr. Manning.
Manning's second. Let me ask staff real quickly. Staff, did staff have a recommendation regarding this item?
Mr. Chair, the information that you've just heard would be consistent with staff's original recommendation, and after, again, briefing from legal, we are fine with that. That recommendation has been.
You mean with the recommendation for?
For denial.
Yeah. Any further discussion? If not, Ms. Manning, recognize.
I'd just like to say for the record that Councilman Malinowski, although he's not a member of the DNS committee, as I am as the seconder, that he did attend and fully participated in the committee in particular, this item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manning.
Any further discussion? If not, it's removed and properly seconded for denial. I'll ask Ms. Only to call roll, reference the motion.
Sir, Malinowski.
Yes.
Dickerson.
Yes.
McBride.
Yeah.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tratio.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings us to item four on your agenda, Administration of Finance Committee. Now, if you have your A and F packet, that's on page two, four to three, through two fifty-nine. Ms. Dickerson. That's the A and F matter. I'll just start proper definition. Ms. Dickerson.
Mr. Chair, I'm trying to speak for Ms. Dickerson, but may I communicate?
Go ahead, please.
That item was approved. There was a notation made by council member Myers that it would have been beneficial if she had been aware of that information. Yet she wasn't. That item was moved for approval.
So the committee's recommendation was for approval?
That is my recommendation.
Unanimously, yes, sir.
Yes, okay. So the committee's recommendation for approval. Any discussion reference committee's recommendation?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Malinowski, recognize.
Thank you, sir. At the committee, I did vote to approve it. I agree we shouldn't be doing this, but I still, and I'm sure there was not enough time. But I would like to see some response back from staff as to what the cost will either, will be to Richland County, either in taxes not taken in or in possibility of additional taxes taken in based on their historic property. So I just would like to see that, even though I'll support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? There being on, Ms. Only, can you call the roll for the motion regarding item four A?
Sir, Malinowski.
Yes.
Dickerson.
Yes, and also remember my comments to make sure that staff please inform council members when certain things like this come up, but yes.
Yes, ma'am. McBride.
Yeah.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tratio.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Manning. Jackson.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That brings to item five, Transportation Ad Hoc Committee. If you do not have your special call meeting packet, if you have your transportation packet, it's on page five through fourteen. Mr. Chair, Jackson. I'm sorry, Mr. Walker.
Mr. Chair, it's been brought to my attention that there's a time sensitivity to the item that was put before us by the A and F committee as far as transaction timing. So I would actually move to reconsider the previous items.
We're going to take that up now before moving on.
Mr. Chair, I actually would like a little more information on that before. I know Mr. Walker says that there's some time sensitivity. It will be helpful since it is the area. I represent that I knew what that was. I'd like to wait.
Is that second to the motion for reconsideration? There's no second to most reconsideration discussion? Well, I'm sorry, we already voted on that. That item is just going to be considered. Reconsideration for.
It dies for lack of second.
That brings us to item five, again, Transportation Ad Hoc Committee. Mr. Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'd like to move that that item be considered, moved favorably for first reading.
That was a committee's recommendation?
Yes, committee's recommendation, sir.
Committee's recommendation is moved for first reading. Any discussion? If not, Ms. Only, can you call roll regarding committee's recommendation of item five A?
Yes, sir. Malinowski.
Yes.
Dickerson.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tratio.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Manning. Jackson.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes, ma'am.
Newton.
Yes. Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings to item six, Coronavirus Ad Hoc Committee. Item six A is coronavirus relief fund requirements. If I recall, the committee recommendation was for us to ask legal, you know what, Ms. Myers, that was your motion. Do you remember? Do you want to state what that was?
Yes, sir, I remember.
I was about to mess it up.
If legal is on the, no, no, it's okay. Legal is on the line. Mr. Smith, are you there?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll restate my, okay. I'll restate my concern for the group, and then I'll speak right if you can speak to it. So the concern of the committee was that Mr. Brown and Tetra Tech made us aware that the funds that we expected that we were going to get directly had been given to the state, we thought to be distributed on a proportionate basis, basis based on population in the counties. But we were informed that the governor has instituted a different program, and we may not get proportionate amounts of the money based on population. What may happen now is we're competing with every other county for a smaller pot of funds. So my question was, does the statute allow for that kind of discretion on the part of the governor? And are we entitled to the funds as a direct grant based on what Congress did? And I asked the legal department to take a look at that and then to collaborate with other counties and to check with the Association of Counties and perhaps our lobbyists to see if the process that has been instituted is correct or if we need to move for some other relief. With that, I'll be quiet, Mr. Smith.
And that was the committee's recommendation. Any further discussion reference committee's recommendation?
Mr. Chair, may I be recognized?
Yes, please.
This is Shaketh Newton. Thank you. Ms. Myers stated her motion, as I will call it, from committee. But I just had one additional question, which was, one of the things that we discussed was the, if, what would happen if we signed the agreement that allowed us to access the system to apply for reimbursement, if that would preclude us?
I was going to do that on item B.
Okay, thank you.
That's the second item.
I jumped the gun. I apologize.
Any further discussion? Ms.
Is Mr. Smith going to address?
I thought you said.
Yeah, I'm.
Okay, I'm sorry, sir.
I thought you did.
Yeah, okay. So.
Mr. Smith, you backseat him?
Yes, sir. I was just going to address what Ms. Myers said. Between the time that you all had the coronavirus committee meeting and now, we did have an opportunity to go back and gather some information regarding to the way that the state proposes to distribute the money to the local governments pursuant to a sub-recipient agreement, which is what the committee reviewed and which we were asked to review as well. And based on the information that I have at this point, it appears that the legislation, which came from Congress, provided that if you had a local government with population of five hundred thousand or less, and apparently Richland County has approximately four hundred and twenty thousand people, that you would use a benchmark that was based on forty-five percent of the local government's per capita share of the statewide allocation. So basically, there's a formula, which according to the Treasury, that they outlined as to how this money should be allocated to those local governments whose population is less than five hundred thousand. It's my understanding that Greenville was the only county that got direct payment because their population was over five hundred thousand. So they got direct payment from the federal government. Based on what we received, what we're being told is that the state wants counties that have less than five hundred thousand to basically compete for the rest of those dollars by way of this sub-recipient agreement. And we haven't been able to find anything in the legislation which says that that is the formula that they intended to be followed for those local governments with less than five hundred thousand people.
Mr. Chair, can I ask Ms. Smith a question?
Yes, Ms. Ma'am.
So, Mr. Smith, that means then, to translate it so I understand it, does that mean then that we should go back? Because there is a formula, even though we're less than half a million people, there is a formula by which funds should be allocated rather than just on a discretionary competitive basis, as would be the case with this agreement, correct?
That's correct. That's the way that I read it, Ms. Myers, based on the information that we've been able to gather between four o'clock and now. And so going back to your motion, I do think that obviously Richland County.
Mr. Chair, excuse me, Ms. Smith. Excuse me, Ms. Smith. Mr. Chair, I think if that, if Ms. Smith is right, it may well be that we might need to take this up in executive session. Because I think it might involve perhaps litigation even, right, Mrs. Smith?
It could, yes. And we can, and we can always wait until y'all get to the end to do that.
All right, so that would be, that would be six A and B. Now, Newton, you weren't jumping the gun. I guess we do have them together now. If that's the case, then if we're going to consider that in executive session and do the other item, I'll go ahead on to item six C and move that one to executive session. Mr. Brown, reference relief grant program.
Yes, sir. That is specific.
About the extension, I think, is what we talked about.
Yes, sir. That is correct, and the committee did approve that with the understanding from Ms. McBride. If necessary, we will come back and request additional time if needed, but it wasn't a move with approval, sir.
So that was, in other words, removing the, the time from August one through October.
Through October thirty-first, yes, sir.
October thirty-first. And the committee's recommendation was for approval.
That's correct, with the understanding that if necessary, we would come back again to extend the time.
Any discussion reference committees and recommendation item six C? If not, I'll ask Ms. Only to call the roll for item six C.
Sir, Malinowski.
Yes.
Dickerson.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tratio.
Yes.
Walker. Manning. Jackson.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and we had two items for executive session. Was it, which one was, was it City B G?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
It was item three A and six A and B, which are now somewhat combined. So chair and ten motion for executive session for item three A and six A B.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
I have Malinowski, and then I heard a voice out the door.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Three A, we've already voted on, so we don't need to do executive session on that one. And I've got a question. I don't know if you want to.
I thought, there was another, we changed our mind about executive session for three A?
Yeah, because we voted on it.
Okay, thank you.
And I have a question about a transportation matter. I don't know if you want me to do it now or wait till we come out after executive session.
Can we come out after executive? Let's wait, come out.
And let me, thank you.
So the motion for executive session, is that correct, with only the item six A and B? I thought we talked about another item.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but we voted on it.
Okay, thank you. We changed our mind for those. Okay, so the motion to go into executive session for A and B is moving properly second? Ms. Only, go ahead and call the roll now for the vote going into executive session.
Yes, sir. Malinowski.
Yes.
Dickerson.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tratio.
Yes.
Walker. Manning.
No.
Jackson.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll wait for the signal from you to hit the button, go into the next session.
Okay, well now I'm. I have executive session. I entertain a motion reference of discussing executive session.
Mr. Chair, I move that we come out of executive session.
I would take that one first.
Second.
If the movement properly second. Ms. Owen, can you call roll reference the motion come out of executive session?
Yes, sir. Malinowski.
Yes.
Dickerson.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tratio.
Yes.
Walker. Manning. Jackson.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The chair will now entertain a motion reference item six A B.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Newton, you recognize?
Yes, it feels like eons ago before executive session, but I was under the impression that Councilwoman Myers stated a motion before we went into executive session. Is that correct?
Yes, I don't, I can't.
Yes.
Move in properly second.
Okay, well, I'll second it.
Okay, that must move, okay, it's properly second, Ms. Ms. Owen, do you have that motion that we're referencing?
No, sir. If Ms. Myers could repeat it, I would appreciate it.
I'd move the instructor staff to evaluate the CARES Act and the county's options under that act. And to take actions or recommend to the council actions consistent with the funding formula under the act.
Okay, that's moved.
Thank you.
Properly second and discuss reference motion.
Mr. Chair.
You recognize this man? I'm sorry, Mr. Malinowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Myers, if I could make a friendly amendment in part of that motion of yours, as well as to make sure that they reach out to other stakeholders and officials of the state government as needed.
Absolutely, sir, I accept it.
I agree with you, Mr. Malinowski.
Thank you. Thank you.
I do as well.
Okay, with that, it's a move in properly second. We got a friendly amendment, so I'll ask. Ms. Owen, call roll for the motion.
Yes, sir. Malinowski.
Yes.
Dickerson.
Yes.
McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tratio.
Yes.
Walker. May. Jackson.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes, ma'am.
Newton.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
That brings to item seven. German. Can I turn the motion?
Mr. Chair, I had something I wanted to ask about transportation.
Go ahead, please.
Uh, that was because it's going to be a long time since we meet again, and that was on a previous. Well, in our transportation meeting today, the administrator made comment that he wasn't going to approve any projects that were over the referendum. However, in a previous council meeting, the staff had presented to us these scopes of projects, and all those projects were in one particular item on the agenda. It's my recommendation that council did approve staff to move forward with all that de-scoping in whatever way they needed to. I don't know if I voted for or against that item, but that doesn't make any difference. The fact is, if council did actually approve moving forward with something, I think that that staff needs to allow them to move forward so that we don't wind up having negative publicity by holding something back that was already approved by the council. That's all I wanted to say.
Mr. Chair. I'll reflect, I'll reflect the minutes and whatever is in the minutes that said approved by council.
Yeah, that's where I was going.
Expect us to move forward.
That's where I was going, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I agree with Mr. Malinowski.
And I agree with Ms. McBride and Mr. Malinowski.
And I agree with Ms. Dickerson and Mr. Malinowski and everybody else that thinks along those lines.
Well, anyone like to be recognized? Ms. Dixon?
Yes, sir, I'd like to be recognized as chair.
Mr., Mr., you recognize this one, that?
Thank you, sir. I'm glad to hear that what was going to be recommended to the council in the future has automatically been approved tonight by everyone saying they honored that because we were simply going to make sure in the effort of full transparency, Mr. Manning, that there were any items in that approved list that exceeded the referendum, which prior to that list, every member of the council voted to not fund or to allow to move forward, that you understood that, and you still wanted that list to go forward. And so if you're saying tonight, you're happy with that decision on May 5th, regardless of the status of whether they were referendum or not, and I'm happy to hear that, there will be no need then to bring them back, those two or three projects back to you for for individual approval. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
That's right.
That's right, that's right.
Do you know what the two or three are?
Yes, we, yes, we do.
Too late now. What are they, Mr. Jackson?
In, 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 you made the decision tonight, so I'd rather not get into that tonight, Ms. Myers.
Yeah, yeah, we'll mail them to you, we'll mail them to you. It's, that wasn't on the agenda.
I didn't say that I was in it. I didn't say I, let me just.
We're just getting practical, we're not going to debate that, and that's not on the agenda.
Well, do we need to reconsiderate? Do we need to do a move?
Let me just make it clear that I did not, I did not say that I agree with that. What I said was, if that is the case, I expect Renovance to begin next week because there are often times that we vote on things that don't happen. So I'd like to know what the projects are in advance.
And I'm saying that we, at the, at the May 5th meeting, there was a motion to reconsider that was denied.
We're going into an area, move by German.
It's most by German, they're second.
Second.
It's move properly second for a German. Um, Ms. Owen, can you call roll?
Yes, sir. Alan Apke.
Yes.
Dickerson.
Yes, and I'm leaving. Bye.
Bye. McBride.
Yes.
Livingston.
Yes.
Tratio.
Yes.
Walker.
With that being, that mean the.
Jackson.
Yes, yes.
Myers.
Yes, ma'am.
Newton.
Yes.
Thank you all so very much. Needs adjourned. I'm gonna miss you all.
Thank you, Mr. Livingston.
Everybody stay safe.
Have a happy, safe, safe time, safe, safe house.